I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a city council work session. It is Monday, December 1st at 6:00 PM. Please stand for the flag. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton present. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilor Matavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Rathmont.
Present.
Councilmember Dunin is absent. Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Present.
Thank you.
Yeah, the first item on the agenda is a presentation of an audit from Bonadillo and Co. In finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh and our presenter is Jacob Skaval.
Ah, no, we have another presenter.
Oh, different presenter? Let us.
He'll introduce himself.
Come on down.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Evans. I am actually the engagement partner for the external audit. Jake is our manager. He's usually here with me tonight, but I gave him the night off. So this is the, um, we'll go through a presentation of a summary of the audit results for December 31, 2024. Unfortunately, uh, it's pretty stale at this point, so I'm gonna go through it pretty quickly and just sort of, you know, one of the things I always point out is for us to issue the financial statements, uh, we do have to wait for the, um, joint sewer treatment financial statements, which we regularly get those in September. So these, uh, your federal reports are due September 30th, so it's always sort of a crunch to get the, uh, audit done and out the door then. The work itself is usually done in June or July. By the end of July, we're in pretty good shape and just waiting, so. And we'll point that out. We weren't just putting you off. It's just the, the timing of the way these things happen. So in your bound presentation there, we'll skip right over to page four, the independent auditor's report. Our job is to give an opinion on those financial statements. Your job is, uh, the preparation and fair presentation, which Chuck largely handles for you. Our opinion is a clean opinion meeting. We believe it's fairly presented in all material respects. That's the opinion you're looking for. No issues there. On to page five, a couple of things I'm required to point out to you is all the transactions have been recognized in the proper period. We spend an awful lot of time doing testing to make sure that your expenditures and your revenues are recorded in the right year. And obviously, you're very budget driven, so that's kind of an important thing for us to do. Sensitive estimates, we'll talk about some of those in a second, but we're required to point out that the useful lives of capital assets, post-employment benefit, liabilities, compensated absences, those are all estimates, um, and they can change significantly from year to year. Onto page six, we did have a couple of audit adjustments. They were not material audit adjustments. There were decrease in revenues. In the, yes.
Thank you. Excuse me for interrupting. Uh, the page five. No transactions entered. There's a lack, for which there's a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. What defines consensus in that context?
Consensus in, in terms of the guidance over it. So there was no, like, not consensus related to this.
Thank you.
So, yeah, definitely related to accounting guidance, so. Okay, back to page six. We did make a couple of audit adjustments in the Capital Projects Fund. They weren't material, but we're required to point out that those numbers did change a little bit from the numbers that you saw during the year. Mostly related to year-end timing of recording, um, I think mostly related to grant revenues. Not a big deal there. We are required to point out that we did pass on one entry on the government-wide of 500,000. You might think that's a big number, but again, the government-wide financial statements are all assets, all liabilities of the city together. So 500,000 really does not, uh, constitute a material number. And again, that's a timing issue that will just roll into the next year, like, not, not anything of concern. On page seven are the financial statement highlights related to that statement in net position. So again, all of the city's, uh, assets, liabilities together, both short-term and long-term, generally not a very useful statement. Um, at the bottom of that statement, it shows that you're in a deficit of 38 million. Normally that's a concerning number. But when we look at the, the cause of that is mostly retiree health benefits, which is about 63 million. Now, New York State does not give you a mechanism to fund that liability, so it's always gonna be a deficit. You're gonna pay on an annual basis, the premiums associated with that. So don't pay a lot of attention to the statement in that position.
I'm sorry, just to,
Yep.
Just to clarify, so 37.8 million in deficit would typically be a concern, but you're saying because the context is retiree health benefits, it's not a concern.
Right. And again, that's a long-term liability. That 30, that 63 million that I talked about represents basically what you expect to pay for all of your current employees and your retired employees. So which is not what you're paying right now. You're paying, you know, small premiums to basically take care of the current retirees. Get an actuarial estimate.
Uh, just a quick question. Do you ever see, um, anywhere where there isn't a big deficit or like with any other, um?
That's a good question. That, that deficit's pretty normal. So again, when we pull out that retiree health number, you're actually, that net position is actually a positive roughly 26 million. So without the ability to fund that number, it's kind of like, okay, you have to record this giant liability, but you're not gonna let us set any assets aside to pay for it. It doesn't really make any sense. So your assets will be accumulated over time to pay for that through your annual budget. So it's not really a concern. The only real thing that you would do with that number is maybe compare it to other cities of similar size and look at it and then go, hey, is this, you know, kind of in line with that, with the number of employees they have? That's really the benefit of that number.
And can you speak to that?
I haven't specifically looked at that, but I, I can certainly get back to you. I mean, we, we also do the financial statements for, you know, City of Troy, City of Utica. We can certainly take a look at that and see, like, does this line up with those? Okay, so page eight, these are the fund financial statements. So we'll talk about the gen fund or the operating fund, which is more in line of what you're accustomed to sort of managing to. Your annual budget goes towards this. The, the big number I always look at and I always present to you is that unassigned fund balance, which is $12 million. So that's purely savings. When we take that number and we look at it in comparison to your annual expenditures in the gen fund, and that number's about 16.7%. Historically, OSC, the Office of State Comptroller, would recommend that that's exactly the number they're looking for. It's about two months worth of expenditures. They do that because if that number gets bigger, they might accuse you of overtaxing your, your residence. If it gets smaller, they might accuse you of not having enough in reserves to pay for an emergency. So generally that 16 to 20% is, is where they like you to be. So I think you're, you're in good shape in that respect.
The 12 million unassigned specifically is exactly the number they're looking for?
Yes, yep. Those, those other categories of fund balance, um, non-spendable is really just related to prepaid's. So it's, you know, you've already paid for that, so that's already set aside. Restricted is an outside restriction, so that might be a grant or something that's specific to be used for a, a specific purpose. And assigned fund balance is typically what you've set aside for the next year's budget, to balance the next year's budget. So that's why when we come down to unassigned, that's purely your savings account. That's everything that's left. No strings attached to that.
That 2 million assigned, uh, so where you represented that 12 million unassigned with some wiggle room. What is the relation between the 2 million assigned for the next year? Is that to off? Is that to support the unassigned?
No, so that's basically to balance your budget. So every year, usually when you go through and you do your budget, you have revenues and expenditures and there's, there's likely a difference that's a shortfall. And you usually use fund balance to, um, to basically account for that. So you basically dip in for like, for this year, 123125, this is now. You basically set aside $2 million to balance your budget. I don't know where you're at for this year.
We, we're there.
Okay.
We're there.
Do you expect to?
Yeah, we expect to use it. But and I haven't really looked at it, but I know we're close.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kind of have that benefit at this point in time to have a pretty good look at where you're at. Um, but that's what that number represents. In terms of the other funds, Capital Projects Fund, you'll also see a deficit there. And that's basically sort of a accounting mirage. You have an outstanding bond anticipation note, which is a short-term debt instrument. When that's converted to long-term, you will recognize revenue and that deficit goes away. So there's really no concern there. Just one of those kind of weird accounting things. And, and also the parking ramps and the golf fund are both showing some small deficits that will have to be made up, uh, over the next couple of years.
So how concerning are those, the deficits in those two funds and what pace should be looking at to, would we be looking at to fill the holes?
Generally, you should be trying to, and again, it's, you, you should be trying to make those up as soon as possible. Because of the nature of, of governmental funds is they're basically on an annual basis, your revenues and expenditures. So you're, you're trying not to generate those deficits. But you do need to figure out a way either through, like, we'll use the golf funded as an example, either through increased fees. Maybe you need some grants or maybe, you know, at the end of the day, the general fund needs to subsidize that. So those are decisions that, you know, probably when you come to the end of this year and you see where you're at, those are the decisions that, that need to be made.
Could you, and you may have said this and I missed it, but could you, back to general fund balance, what would constitute non-spendable?
Non-spendable is, is really just prepaid expense and inventory. So those are things that are already basically paid for. So they haven't been recognized as expense yet, so they're kind of sitting there. Just exactly as it sounds, they're non-spending.
I, I think she'd like examples probably of, of those.
Prepaid expense, like if you, you have an insurance policy, let's say, um, you pay for a year of it in, um, November. So now you have a prepaid that carries into the next year. And that's when the expenses will hit.
Committed.
So that's, so the next year it'll reduce fund balance then, but you already know that it's not available fund balance, so we're kind of setting that aside. That's why that, that unassigned number is really sort of the key there. That's its savings number. If you start to see that dip over time, that's when you need to be concerned. Okay, are expenditures getting out of control? Are revenues not keeping up with that? At this point in time, you're in, you're in very good shape though. And I guess the, you know, when we come back next year and as you go into next year's budget, we, you know, for instance, if, if you ended up using $4 million of assigned fund balance to balance the budget this year, then you'd be concerned, okay? We overspent somewhere or we didn't get the revenues that we expected to get somewhere. So those are the type of things that you'd want to look for. Any other questions on the, uh, current year results?
My question is about the, the fund balance policy, because earlier this year I heard that OSC recommended like 10% general fund balance, then beyond that is overtaxing, but then like less than that is concerning, because there's not enough.
Yeah, they moved, they moved that number around a little bit. Um, historically, it's been 15 to 20 for cities. So if they're saying 10 now, okay, um, I don't think you're, you know, grossly, um, being abusive there, holding on to money. You know, school districts are only allowed to have 4%. I think that's, that's, that's a pretty tough way to, to run an entity with that little, um, fund balance, so. Okay, over on page 10, um, so the results of the, uh, uniform guidance audit, which is your audit of your federal funds, we'll start with, uh, the yellow book. Had we had any findings related to your financial statement? In terms of internal controls, we would report those here. No material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. Those entries that I talked about that were immaterial, if those numbers were bigger, we would have called those a material weakness, because we would have been part of your internal controls at that point. They're small enough that we're making you aware of them. We come back next year and we make larger adjustments, you would see a finding reported right here. On the next page is your, um, uniform guidance or your single audit. The programs we tested this year were your coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, also known as your ARPA funds. We looked at that and your disaster grants. We did not have any findings there, so no internal control findings, no findings, uh, relative to compliance over those federal guidelines. So sort of a perfect score there. And lastly, I will talk about, uh, we do have a new accounting pronouncement that we will, uh, put into effect next year. It's not relative to numbers we audit, but it's relative to those, uh, the management and discussion and analysis, which Chuck largely prepares at the beginning of the financial statements, which sort of discusses the economic, uh, environment and the changes from year to year. So just, uh, something to be aware of as we go forward, you'll see some, uh, additional analysis in there, which I think is a good thing. It's been kind of a, you know, a document that's sort of a regurgitation. I think that additional analysis is, is valuable.
How? Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, um, so you rotate through the federal ones that you're looking at. So for example, we're aware of our HUD money, some issues with our HUD money and not being spent down fast enough and letters from the government. So is that not something that would be captured in your type of audit, or is it just not something that was looked at because you're looking at particular funds?
Yeah, so it's, it's, uh, we're required to do a risk assessment of the programs over 750,000. I believe we've done the HUD program in the past where we're required to do it at least every three years, unless there's a finding. If there's a finding, we need to do it the following year. I don't believe we've had findings in that program in the past, or at least the last time we did it. So yeah, it was sort of rotated out. The ARPA funds, um, are required, as long as you're over 750. The ARPA funds are required to be, um, audited every year, because the federal government has deemed them to be high-risk. So we'll, we'll continue to look at them, you know, depending on your level of spending.
That was the nature of my question as well. So just to make sure I understand, the risk assessment of funds over 750,000 is required, and that's how the major programs are identified?
Yes.
Would it be possible in the audit process for a request to be made for an assessment of other programs?
Generally, no, but if you're telling me there's,
Letters.
If there's letters or communications from the federal government, that would, that might be something that we would say, okay, this is a higher-risk program. We should really take a look at it.
And there weren't, so there weren't any conversations regarding?
Not for 2024. We, you know, we'll be, actually, we'll hate to say it, but we'll, we'll be starting our planning process for 2025 shortly, unfortunately.
So there, there were a couple of restatements though for, uh, grant monies and our CHIPS program, yes, administration, and we've implemented.
That was, that was from the previous year. I don't know if this was CHIPS money. I think this was something else.
Yeah, I did have a comment about CHIPS last year. Not, not the 2024, I think it was 2023.
And then w- we had the correction that Rachel's auditing that this year.
And then next year. Our new grant writer is gonna start.
Or, or administrator, rather. Yeah, I had just mentioned that.
But that was on 20, that was fiscal, that was fiscal 2023.
23.
Oh, gosh. Thinking back too far. All right. So, but we've already then kind of upped our game. We, we corrected those.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of correcting it, so we shouldn't have that problem going forward.
And certainly, um, you know, as we go forward into 25, um, any commentary that you have, you know, any concerns that you have, you know, feel free to reach out to, to me directly and we, and again, we will include that as part of the risk assessment.
Nothing else? Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time tonight.
All right. Next, we'll be looking at RL 25.
No, no.
Nope, you're not done?
Third quarter financials. Chuck doesn't off the hook yet.
Okay.
Oh, no, here. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
This, uh, this little bit didn't make it to the agenda, but we're looking at our.
I, I thought I got off.
No.
You're not making it past Councilman Kavanaugh. So.
Well, I guess.
Where do you want to start?
Something here.
So I this is, uh, as of end of September. So
Yes.
Going through this, I mean, things that struck me, overages as far, seemed to be a lot of electricity and a lot of overtime. But we have subsequently dealt with a lot of that and/or are dealing with it tonight.
Yeah, hopefully this, the rest of the evening will correct almost all of those.
All right. Because it was, yeah. Electricity in several spots and police and fire overtime. Significant. The main highlights.
Could I ask a quick question? As, as you're kind of going through that?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh. And I know we discussed this during budget and, and Chuck, this is, it's either you or a Bob question, but could you remind me where? Well, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong first, that outside counsel is not represented in the law budget. So how does that? How do those expenses get represented ultimately?
So most pretty much all of our outside counsel budget that we use is in the risk management budget under the insurance fund.
Any chance either of you have a line item number?
It's the M fund.
It's gonna be M1910. And then I can't tell you what.
Page.
Thank you. Again, I know we've been over it. I just keep going to the law budget expecting to see it and it's not there, so that's.
It's page, page 56 of, of this municipal report.
Thank you.
And we were at 84% used. So 480,000 of 650,000 as of the end of September. So Chuck, what I was slightly concerned about was, and that, just, and again, like, there's probably reasons for this. We're at less than 50% of parking ramp revenue for, projected parking ramp revenue for the year as of three quarters of the way through the year.
Yeah, um, usually the September reports are a month behind. Well, in ramps and golf, they're a month behind. It's just due to the fact that it takes them about three weeks for them to get us our, their reports.
Right.
For the next, for the previous month.
So any revenue lines that you're concerned about?
In any fund?
Sure.
Golf and, golf and ramps, they won't, they won't hit there. Well, let me take that back. Ramps, no, they will not. Golf fund will probably hit their revenue marks, but they're also gonna having the expenditures to go with it.
That we've.
To keep up.
The capital thing.
To keep up the, um, to keep up the, uh, golf course.
And they were 85% plus of their target, so they're ahead of their revenue targets as of.
They had a relatively okay October.
Okay. And next year. Next year. I mean, those were my comments. Anything else, generally speaking?
Yeah, but I, I didn't know if I was gonna be on the agenda or not, so I, I did a quickie, comparison for the last three years. I, I didn't have time to print it out, I'm sorry. But I can print it out for you. About all the major funds and where they compared to September from last year, the year before, the year before. Going back to 2022. So this report shows where we were sitting on September 30th. Over the past four years. So for, um, I saw it out of the corner of my eye and so for the general fund, between 2024 and 2025, we're down about 1.5 million dollars in revenues. And, but we're up about 700,000 dollars in expenses. Difference is about 1.5 million dollars. Um, that's what I have on here. But that could just be due to timing, um, before, when we get revenues in. And we probably sent out, um, more expenses, like he said, prepaid expenses. We did have, we do pay a lot of insurance, goes from June to June. Or June 1st to May 31st. So a lot of, everything sits in prepaid for a, for a long period of time. Some of their professional services contracts and different departments do the same thing. They start in like September or they start in April.
Can we stop right there just for a second? So you said the revenues are down like 1, 1.5 compared to last year?
Is it? As of September.
Okay. And is that, is there a particular revenue that is driving that? Is it in?
It's, it's basically a total, because I know that sales tax is up. But our pilots were down, because we're, have pilot two less. So it, it's, it's, it's a lot of them. I didn't do an analysis. No, I just, it's just top level.
Okay.
But I mean, you could probably see, if I print it out, I can print out a different type of report if you like. I can print out this report, it'd look like that, but it would have all the year. As of September or December or what have you, every year, and we can do. And then we could do the comparison every year for whatever month. So like you could look and say, our revenues for the general fund were 57.4, and then this year they're at 55.2. So they're down one point four million dollars. And then we can look at the analysis if you like. I, I honestly, I didn't, I didn't look at every line in every budget.
Uh, if you, if you knew right now, that's, that's all I was looking for. I don't, we don't need to deep dive it.
Um, so that's the general fund, but actually, I mean, as of today, uh, if you're looking at it, the budget's basically even. So our expenses and our revenues have evened out um, until we pay our, um, retirement bill that he was talking about earlier in December. Then that's nine million dollars. So. Um, the refuse fund is, is actually doing well. It's, um, up about, wow, one, two million dollars. And the expenses are only up, uh, one million dollars. So it has a surplus, uh, this year be from compared to last year. Um, the ramps fund is down one point four million dollars. Their revenues is down, like Robert mentioned earlier, but their expenses are up. Now their expenses are up basically due to this year they got hit with the, uh, bond payment for the ramps. And the first year was, was rather a large payment between the, for the, um, the Water Street. I'm sorry, yeah, the Water Street bond payment. So. The golf revenues, like I said, they're doing well. They're up about eight hundred thousand in revenues from last year at this, in September, and their expenses were hardly up a little bit. Um, so there, they have a positive balance of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars right now. The water fund, they're up about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue and their expenses are about the same. So they're up about one point one million dollars as of September. And the sewer fund is up about two point six million dollars all totaled. Um, and that's because we raised the rates last year, so they're doing well. The only two funds that we really have a problem with right now is the ramps and golf, but golf is doing well. They'll probably break even this year.
Um, I'm just looking at some of the capital capital fund lines, um. Is, is there, um, I think Mr. Lake is here too. Anything that we've stalled out? I, I just have the sewer lines open, for example, um, uh, was it the, uh, I think Moeller Street Pumping Station, for example, we're only thirty-six percent the way, or sorry. Uh, we're only thirty-six percent the way through that budget is that, uh, are any projects that have, that have stalled out unexpectedly that we've, we've fully funded or, or anything?
Was that a specific line?
That was specific. I just happened to pull that one out. That happened to be Moeller Streets, uh, pump, I think.
What was it called?
Moeller Street. I think it's the pump, pumping station on Moeller Street. Is that right?
Yes, it's, yeah. Is it a bond line? Does it have a project code like two-two something?
It's, uh, he. Two-eight-one-seven.
Two-zero-eight-one-seven. Yeah, that's the old bond. Um, there should be another line.
Wait, hold on, going down. Two-two-one-one-eight. There we go.
Okay.
Yeah. So. But so those are all performing as expected so far, as far as.
I think that.
More or less, Ron? Alright, I just, I, I'm just. Right? Uh, but just as a general question, anything else kind of behind where we thought we would be? No, I, I get that. You know, the other one with a lot of money available in sewers is the, the interceptor project, of course. But that's.
Right, we're still going through the financials and having meetings with the lawyers about that.
See that one, uh, Court and Tompkins. Still all sitting there, so, because we haven't. Uh, Court, it's cuts off at Court and Tomp. But I'm gonna two-two-eight-two-four is the code. Is that, is that another pump station? Yes. That we haven't gotten started yet. Okay.
Yeah, the
Right. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, if you look at the, I don't know if I've mentioned this, but if you look at the project codes, the last two dates or the years that the bond ordinance was approved. So at the end of that year, you guys approved the bond ordinance during the budget process in twenty-twenty-four for that one, so it was just recently. Year ago.
Okay. I'm okay as far as immediate questions. There's a kind of information here, though. Does anyone else have anything for CR at the moment?
I mean, I think I've wanted to get more into, just generally just more into like the budget runs and reviewing that, and I think next year, if we did it like on a monthly basis, would that seem like it's too much? Not, maybe we don't want to have to print it, but if it's just like, is that?
I, I don't, I don't mind like, print, like putting them on base camp for you.
Yeah.
And, but do you want me to come and speak upon them or you can just email me them questions?
I was thinking it would just be kind of like a routine, like the first meeting of the month. I mean, we could skip January, but um, first meeting of the month, do like budget run. Just look at it quick and then when it gets routine enough, it's just like we can talk about any emerging issues kind of.
Yeah, um.
Quicker.
Man, we can talk about that. If you like.
Great, thank you.
Just gotta check schedules and stuff.
Right.
I think in particular to.
Conceivably a monthly finance committee meeting.
Yeah.
During the day.
Yep.
Okay. I'm okay with it.
But, but I, the finance department is happy at any time to, I mean, this report, it's, there's no, it takes no time essentially to run this report for any
No.
Moment in time that we want to look at.
Yeah, I just, I just like to, to preface everything with saying that, that the reports that we do during the year, they're not audited. Um, uh, and they're not like, I can review them. But there may be journal entries outstanding or Larry's behind in posting in treasury because he's getting water bills out uh, at the end of the month. And he won't post the last week in, in February until the middle of March. Um, so some revenues won't be posted. Um, that, it happens. It's, I mean, it's not all the time, but it happens. So if I ran a monthly report for you on the first of the month or the second, it wouldn't be exactly accurate. It'd be close. You'd have a good understanding of what's going on each month if you looked at it every month. I mean, I'm not gonna, that, that would be okay.
Right, I think, yeah. For going back to budget season, it just seemed like there was certain, certain items that needed uh, attention. I think the monthly thing would, would help more, but if there's, I mean, I think it's reasonable to expect that there's going to be some, some delays and that monthly might not really be the.
Yeah, I mean, because, because of summertime, that is when basically all your capital items are getting spent. Because that's when they're actually out doing the projects. So it, it really affects your DPWs and your engineering department and the capital fund.
Okay.
How closely, so I am still seeing uh, CY forty-six, forty-seven, some forty-eight, so in the realm of pages twenty two to twenty-five, twenty-six. How closely are you working with the, the planning department on monitoring what remains, uh, available and unused under CDBG, obviously our primary concern, but, but I, I mean, even there's unused ESG and CODO. I mean, unused home ERP, obviously we uh, we allocated those awards, but there's still other counts under CY forty-six, forty-seven that are at zero, fifty, sixty-four percent are.
Um, I know they brought in, um, Mr. Palmer, I believe. He was a former employee here and he worked, um, on a, uh, CDBG project, um, many years ago. Um, I know he's working with the planning department, Julia's department in reconciling some of these items. I personally am not involved in that. He's come and asked me questions, asked me what the former manager did um, and how he did his thing, but I could only answer in generalities because, um.
Would you recommend if I had questions about percentage, percentages used? Would that be a you question or is that a Juliette? Okay. Okay.
There we all set. Okay, now we can actually move on to the second item on the agenda, which is RL twenty, twenty-five dash one-eighty. An ordinance to amend the twenty-twenty-five police budget to account for the expected overtime budget items. I had the presenter as our acting chief police, John Ryan. I don't see him here. Are you familiar with this one? Mr. Robinson.
Well, let me see it. Print them all out. Yes, I am.
It's again, it's again in finance with the council member Kavanaugh.
So you got fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars being moved around.
Yes, these are these are, um, just some of his, but just four budget line items that are out of bud, over budget now. He only has, um, one, I believe, one or two that are close and then his overtime line.
Well, this is not addressed, this one's not addressing that. This is
No, the.
Uh, this is, so the main, main one here is school guards. How did we go so far over on school guards?
Well, if you recall.
Pay thing we did.
Yeah.
Bonus, right?
Yeah, if you recall, um, the school guards is not budgeted for at a hundred percent. Um, we utilize a percentage, um, to estimate how many school guards are going to be using are working throughout the school year. Um, it's just been a formula that they've used, uh, in finance for years. When they changed it to the bonus program, we upped the percentage a little bit because we assumed that most people would be working the whole week to get the bonus. Um, that percentage has gone up even more. So more police officers are actually on the street during their job instead of watching corners. So, um, it, which is a good thing. So, uh, this is, this is to get us through December nineteenth when school is out.
Can we, um? See a bonus actually working? I think we saw a bunch of bonuses previously that we didn't see such clear cut
Yeah.
Results and cost savings.
I would call it incentive pay.
Hey, that's true.
Oh, yeah. Didn't get it.
The, uh, do we have, uh, I mean, just it's a good thing that more people are aware they need to be doing their jobs. Do we have any idea if this, any of this is offset by decreased overtime or, or anything else like that? And maybe that's.
I, I don't know if it directly correlates to overtime for the police department because these would be officers that would be already.
That they're just pulling from the street.
Yeah, they, they would just have, they would be missing for an hour and forty minutes every morning.
Okay.
Would the twenty-nine thousand from personal services presumably be pulled from the vacancies?
Yes, um, once we get the, um, the the vacancies, um, was about nine hundred and forty-five thousand, I think, um, we, we've exceeded that um, mainly in the police and fire budgets, so, um, we're still monitoring that over the next couple of pays and we'll probably have to use some of that for their overtime. But I can, I use some of it for, for this, obviously.
Anything else on this one?
Yeah. I don't have.
And then for any, any of the remaining nine forty-five that is not get used for transfer other purposes goes where?
We, we're going to use the whole nine hundred and forty-three. And then any of the other unused salaries will still be in the budgeted lines. So um, in any, in any of the other budgeted lines in the general fund. They'll just be under budget for the year.
Are we anticipating that we're gonna have another similar shortfall or potentially greater one next year with the school guards? In the budget we just passed?
I don't recall. I don't, I don't remember. I know we raised it, but I don't recall the percentage that we raised it. Um, in back in September, so, but no, we did raise the budget. Um, hopefully I don't anticipate that we'd be up there, but who knows?
All set? Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to RL twenty-five dash one-seventy-eight. Again, considering finance, this is an ordinance to amend the twenty-twenty-five water fund to account for overtime budget items. Welcome down our acting superintendent of water and sewer, Tom Brown.
Mr. Brown, oh, just before we get started, is there any reason this one particular transfer has an expedition request and none of the others do, or is it just something I've mismarked?
Hello, there we go. Uh, right now where I have bills, chemical bills to pay that I don't have enough funding for, along with the professional services for sampling.
Okay.
As we talked in the budget for next year, we raised both of those for the same issue.
I'm sorry, remind me what the professional services were again, that, that you're.
Water testing.
The water testing, right? Okay. Chuck, I, I'm surprised. Is this much extra left over in health insurance?
Yeah, um, the, uh, I don't know why it's over budget that much, um. They, they did have a lot of, um, vacancies. And then Mr. Kruger left as well too. That's part of it too.
Alright. So you'd say the majority of that's created because of.
Not just because of him, but vacancies.
Okay, vacancies in general. Okay.
Did we, in, in the twenty-twenty-six budget, do we increase your electrical that much? I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I know we did a lot of electricity increases. Um, I'm trying to think if that's.
Yeah, this is, this is the only time I've increased his electricity line, but I'm trying to remember what we increased it for last year. I mean, for the next year. I don't know off the top of my head, but I know it was all the electricity lines were increased for next year. I just don't know this particular one. And how much? And how much?
Is the, would the almost a hundred thousand in personal services be attributed to those vacancies in the departure as well?
Um, the, the um, the nine hundred thousand is only in the general fund, so any vacancies in the. In this, in, in the.
Water sewer fund.
The water sewer fund or any other fund, um, there just happens to be vacancies that were in the position, so we just take them out of those lines. They didn't have like a, a salary adjustment line that we put in their budget. And I'm not sure, is that what your question was?
I don't think that was my question, but it could have, it could have been.
Okay.
The. So we know. The one fifty came out of health insurance likely attributable to vacancies.
And then the same thing with personal services, yes.
Right, okay, that was my question, so yes, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we keep track of the vacancies, not just in the general fund, but in all the other funds, water sewer.
It looks like we. Increased. The budget for next year for electricity by the one hundred sixty thousand, so up from three hundred to four hundred sixty.
So we're close.
Pretty close, yeah.
Anything, anything else on this one? Do you have a motion to expedite?
No, I'll motion expedite though.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rathmo.
Aye.
Councilor Medavetsky.
Aye.
Councilor Dunedin's absent, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton, Councilmember Murray's absent, Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Hi.
Thank you, that is five zero.
Thank you, we're gonna move on to RL twenty-five dash one seventy-nine in ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five sewer fund budget to account for over budget items. Again, with uh, acting water sewer superintendent, Tom Brown.
This is just on the other side of the ledger, right, between water and sewer?
Yes.
And we're adjusting. Mostly for electricity.
Mostly, yep.
Little overtime, little postage.
Yeah, um, his personal services will be over by the end of the year, just due to the uh eight days of accrual that we have at the end of the year. Um, his overtime.
Critic time, okay.
It's, yeah, his, his overtime budgets um is negative right now. Um, in sewer, alright.
I don't have anything else.
Well, so. Alright. Okay. Thank you, Mister Brown. Appreciate it. Um, move on to, welcome down Ron Lake, our chief engineer for RL twenty-five dash one eighty-two. In ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five capital fund budget for additional services on MS four. And this one is in finance still. Ari, Ron.
I think it's painful.
It's not supposed to be too bad, so. I think it'll be alright, but. I've just gotta wait a couple more months. Then I'll be back to normal.
Oh, boy.
Good luck, Ron.
Thank you.
No problem.
I don't know, my wife had it and she didn't mind it too bad, so. It'll be good.
Women do tend to be stronger than men. Side note.
I'll do my best.
Okay. So for this. We get. Walk us through it. This is just the, these. These two RLs are related, but this is the budget transfer to cover the additional engineering design.
It is, the, the first two are related and the second two are related. And we had a US EPA audit. Just a few weeks back and. It's obvious that. I don't have the in-house power to get us up to speed, so we need some help. And that's what this first RL is for. And I gave you. At each of your places on a new last page to the contract. Which changes it so that there's fifty thousand and then one forty-five doing the next two years, which. I have budget for, I didn't have anything for this year. So I need that fifty thousand to get them started and we have to respond to ESBA. Probably within a month or two. So.
Yeah, I, I noticed some of those deadlines are coming up awfully quick. Is there, are, are, are we?
Well, here's.
Are we, are we, why are we under the gun? Because of the audit or, or stuff that, things that have changed or?
This is a. This is, we're going into the second year of a new speedy's permit. They totally changed everything that we did. They wanted a whole bunch of more information. Now we've got to do mapping of everything and, and there's just. A lot of requirements, we're gonna have to do some SWPs for some of our facilities. So it's just requiring a lot of stuff that I just can't get done in-house. And when we're done with this, we, with this contract here, we should be in good shape for probably the next five years.
So it um. It looked like there were uh, like thresholds perhaps for which facilities get. Or required to get evaluated and we, we've budgeted for a certain number of them?
No. No, it's, it's just that. When we had our audit by EPA. They have a whole list of things that, that we need to do. And. I want to be able to get some of them done within the next month or two, send it to them. Hopefully, they'll be a little easier on us and we don't have to worry about any fines or anything. So this is just to be proactive on this.
It's not uh, down for expedition. Is it something that would benefit from being expedited?
Actually, I need it expedited. That's the whole reason.
When we're to that portion, I will uh make.
The whole reason for being here, so I can get started on it this month.
So we, we're taking out of the, the. Flood wall pipe inspection and then the water street parking garage. Budget lines.
Yes.
Is there any reason why we didn't end up doing those pipe inspections? Or?
We'll, we'll be doing them, but I have another uh. Account, whi- which will take care of it.
Okay. But so, Ron, what I was referring to is this, this task number four, the general prison prevention plan. For high priority municipal facilities, which we've identified in task three.
That's probably the ones we assume we'll have to do now. There could be one or two more in the future.
That's what I was, alright, so we, we, we budgeted, it looks like, for them to do three of these.
Yes.
SWPs. But there could be more, depending on, we don't know what.
Yes, there could be more. I'm pretty sure we're gonna do three.
Alright.
So, uh, we're ready for a motion to expedite?
And we're putting this, we're giving this to them directly and not going out for RFP based on their current work they've done with.
This is an amendment to a previous contract they had for the, for the water. When they were helping the water plant, so this is not a new contract. They did a good job with their, helping them with their audits.
Okay.
And I really don't have time to. Put it out. So that's why it's an amendment.
I'll motion expedite.
Yeah, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? It's seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rathmo. I think I do have a question.
Sorry.
No, that's.
Does Robert want to rescind his motion?
Hmm, I, I actually don't know how to articulate my question. Um, so I'm gonna say aye. Cause it doesn't feel substantial.
Okay.
Councilmember Medavetsky.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dunedin's absent, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Murray's absent, Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you, it's five zero.
So that was one eighty-two, do we need the same thing with one eighty-three or do?
Yes, both need to be expedited. So now we're gonna consider RL twenty-five dash one eighty-three. And it's related to the expedited fund transfer that we just authorized.
How motion expedite RL twenty-five one eighty-three?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Rathmo. Councilmember Medavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunedin is absent, Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Murray is absent, Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you, it's five zero.
Thank you. So now we can move on to RL twenty-five dash one eighty-five. This is a resolution to amend the agreement with GHD. For the CSO dash LT CP.
That's a long-term control plan monitoring.
Okay.
If you can remember, I probably came to you early in this year. Because DEC had required us to do some more monitoring. Of the, of the rivers and our overflows. And the reason there are two requests here is for the same reason I came to you before. The person that had all the knowledge of the program moved from one company to the other. And so I've left it with HDR, who was the original company, because. They've got everything there, but I would still like the original engineer who was behind all this to review their work. So that's why, that's why we have the two. And they, they've got to put together a monitoring program for twenty-six. The, the EC has required us to do it another year.
Okay.
Any questions?
Is there any, any way that we can see the results of the, the monitoring? Is there anything that's?
Sure, I can give you the report when it's done. Absolutely.
Thanks. That's, that's all I have, is there, so, there's no expedition on this?
I don't need this one expedited, you can take your time.
Okay.
And it's not, I mean, the revision. Is to the, is it a funds revision? Or just a contract revision? Or both?
It's just a contract revision.
Okay.
These, yeah, these are amendments to contracts.
Where, where are you getting the money to pay for it? Is it still in your budget?
I have it in my budget.
Gotcha. I don't have anything else for any of these, does anybody? Okay. Um. So that is, that was both RL one eighty-five and included RL twenty, RL twenty-five one eighty-six. It's their joint. Okay, thank you, Ron.
Have a good night.
Good luck with your hip.
Oh.
Um, so we can move on to RL twenty-five dash one seventy-seventh. Uh, considered in, in finance, this is an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five DPW budget to account for overtime budget items. And our presenter is the acting DPW commissioner, Josh Paludi.
Welcome. Everyone's looking at the transfer sheet, the eighty thousand dollar. It says decrease in revenue from fund balance, should be increase in revenue from fund balance. So. Which? Which piece of equipment? He's accounting for this one.
So it's the vehicle parts line or the central garage, it's a little bit of everything. Um, that's our, what we use for parts for every fleet vehicle that we have. So it's anything from brakes to doors to turn signals to just our basic parts that we order every single day. Uh, I spent a lot of time. Putting back together a lot of trucks that are getting, as you all know, you've heard my spiel before, I have aging trucks, aging trucks. I actually received two new trucks earlier this month, so hopefully. At the end of this winter, I can phase out two other trucks and I have two more coming next year is the plan. So we can stop this vicious cycle of duct tape and zip ties on some of these trucks.
Alright. So you don't anticipate this sort of necessary increase for next year in the parts line? Cause I don't think we gave you an increase that's anywhere near this.
No. I'm, I'm hoping that this starts to level itself out a little bit after these new trucks actually start showing up.
So what, when you're saying, are you doing like basic pickup trucks or these larger dump trucks or?
Everything, everything from a supervisor's escape to a ten-wheel dump truck to the loader. Everything like that, that is not a major repair, like if the loader needs a major repair. Uh, that's something usually we have to send out, this is for basic stuff, just brakes and. Like I said, turn signals, alternators, batteries, thing, things kind of like that. But it's not for any specific type of vehicle, it's for, it's for everything.
What were the two new trucks? That you uh received last month?
I got two new plow and dump trucks. They're a combination vehicle, they can be used for plow and salt in the winter and they can be used for haul and uh. Dump trucks in the summertime.
Oh, we got this expedite.
Request for expedition. Uh, any, any reason for the expedition?
Getting low in funds and I'd like to be able to pay the bills. Right, we have uh pending payments that are for stuff that's already been repaired.
Gotcha. So, there a motion to expedite?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So, motion from Councilmember Middleton, second by Councilmember Rathmo, is there any discussion?
There is, I will vote for expediting these because. We do need to pay our bills, but I will also point out, and I should have done this uh when the water superintendent was here as well, is that. Two weeks ago, we had one item on our work session agenda. Um, and I, I know we're getting to, and if you're timing people, looking at their budget lines and. Figure out what needs to be moved, when and where, but surely some percentage of these RLs could have come down two weeks ago. And it's not to you specifically. Josh, just in general, we could have had some chunk of something on our agenda two weeks ago and had spread it out. That's all.
I will do a better job of getting you a little bit.
And it's, it's absolutely not. Specifically directed at you, and I know it's part of it's the time of the year, but, but I'm just thinking we really could have. Some of this could have come down. Anyway, that's all.
Anything else? So the clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember, oh, aye. Councilor Medavetsky.
Aye.
Councilor Dunedin is absent, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton, Councilwoman Murray is absent, Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you, that is five zero.
You can say.
So.
I, I continued questions.
Um. Just, and maybe this is directed at more Chuck, but, um. Like, what's the window and what's the threshold for spending the money without council's approval? Right? Like, and this isn't, again, not just directed at you. This is something that, that we, we see people come and they say, we, we need this expedited because we have to pay bills that already exist. And then I'm kind of like, okay, well, we're supposed to be in.
It depends upon how much money they have in their budget, obviously, because if it's a bill and it's in their budget, they can pay it. Um, but if they don't have the money in their line, they technically can't spend the money until you get the money in the line. Um.
So is there like an emergency policy? Like, cause obviously we need some snow trucks plowing and we need, like, there's, I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to.
Right. For, for, for me personally, when it comes to vehicle parts, there's a lot of. Up and down depending on the time of the year and things like that. So until the bill comes and I see and go, oh, wow. That's, that's gonna be a big hit. And now I'm gonna be over. So as soon as I see that is kind of when I start coming.
Yeah, it, it, I mean. Uh, it's the department head's responsibility to manage their budget, but I, I do my best to anticipate. Um, as I go through the budget or Rachel, to anticipate. Um, lines that are getting close to the end and then we reach out and say, do you need money? What have you? Um. And then we try to get it in here before. This happens. Uh, the end of the year is pretty tough because a lot of people just, they always wait till the end of the year to spend their budgets. Um, that could be a policy thing. We could figure something out though.
You know, feels, you know, somewhat performative if, if the money has already been spent and then we're being asked to vote on spending it, but that's it.
I, I can also just add as the Secretary of E and A that, uh, the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, that it's ten thousand dollars. Under ten, it can be approved by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment and the Chair of the Finance Committee, under twenty-five hundred, just the comptroller.
Matter of it, since it's so many small bills, but it's rolling into an amount that we have to see, but each of those small bills was approved previously through a different path.
Right. And I typically won't see them until they put in a purchase order in a rec and then the line goes over budget, but at that point in time. Getting to council, waiting two weeks. The check might be late. So, uh, it's just a timing issue sometimes.
Anything else? Should we, so we did the expedition already? Yep. Okay. And now we can move on to RL twenty-five dash one eighty-eight. An ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five DPW budget to account for overtime budget items. So.
Okay. Uh, so actually, when I glanced at this, I was thinking it was. Bastrop courts, but it's the, it's the fifth floor court improvements that we're drawing from, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, it's which court?
What courts?
The Bing and City Courts.
The city court senate, New York State pays us.
Courtrooms with a judge.
New York, they pays us money to maintain and improve the courtroom.
We have a budget line for them to, for us to repair, do whatever, buy rugs, whatever. Um, but we're, we're not gonna get, um, any more bills. Uh, that are gonna reach this amount. So we can take some of that money and use it for Josh.
Do those improvements include? I mean, have you ever sat in those courtrooms for any amount of time?
Luckily, no.
Pews.
Luckily, no. I've never been in upstairs as the council, so.
But they're nice church pews.
Huh? They're nice church pews? That's a.
Do they have pads on them?
No.
No.
My church does.
I. Uh, I know, I don't know if it's actually been introduced. I have a question, but I don't know. Have we introduced it sufficiently to ask? Um, okay. So, and this is more me just, I mean, the, the budget continues to be a learning curve for me. So we've got. Uh, oh, it's page five. Um, so fifty-four, six, ten, where this is headed to. We have spent eighty-five percent. We have another ten grand. Encumbered. Which would leave eighteen available. What is it that we need the additional fifteen for?
Are you looking at the municipal report?
That was in September though.
So, yeah, so that's, yeah.
Okay.
So it's two months since then. So we've presumably spent through that. So do you want to outline what projects? Any particular projects that have consumed budget?
Uh. Motors for the air handlers. They, uh, went out and without those motors for the air handlers, we would be very, very cold in here right now.
Seems important.
Uh, we have three of them. We lost two and one was running all of city hall. So it was something that needed to be fixed quite fast.
Anything else on this? Is there a motion to expedite?
All motion.
Yep.
Do a motion by Councilmember Rathwell, second by Councilmember Medavetski. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
So, Rathwell.
Hi.
Councilmember Medavetski.
Hi.
Councilmember Dunham is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Hi.
Thank you. That is five zero.
Thank you. Good night. Uh. So RL twenty-five dash one seventy-six, an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five general fund budget for planned vacancies. This is in finance and our presenter is Charles Robinson. Our comptroller.
This is the one that you guys were looking for.
So this is every vacancy across all the departments?
This, yeah, this is, um, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, these are the, the amount of the vacancies that were in each department. Um. Uh, some departments still have more vacancies, um, police and fire, obviously, but we're saving those funds for their overtime, uh, closer to the end of the year. See how close we can get.
What's the salary adjustments line?
That, that's that number, that, that nine hundred and forty, uh, three thousand and some change. If you add up the seven hundred and eleven. On that one page and the two thirty-two on the next page, that adds up to that negative budget number that we were discussing.
Okay.
That's the, the hole we create.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's the, the negative number. And this is putting that number back to zero. And then decreasing the, the, uh, revenue, the personnel services lines, excuse me. In the lines that did not pay out salaries. Due to the vacancies. And pretty much every department had some sort of vacancy or person off.
Um, I do have the spreadsheet that was used to calculate all this. I can forward it to anyone that's interested. It is. I, I didn't want to just put it out there because there are some personnel names and stuff in here, but, uh. Mostly police followed by firefighters, several, uh, street maintainers. Few code officers, um, and then. Random things. Junior accountant, hardware software technician, uh, a couple of tree trimmers.
Purchasing agent.
Purchasing agent.
Corp counsel.
Yeah.
To go back to. How we're calculating that nine hundred? Number are, and just to make sure I'm understanding what you're, we should be looking at both the seven seventy-one and the two thirty-three? Is that, okay?
Those two numbers will, uh, make that negative budget number zero. That's where we want it to be.
Cause why are they accounted for separately?
I just didn't, I did, yes, well, this, this request for transfer doesn't allow me to expand lines because it's locked. So I have to use the two pages.
Okay, so it's this, it's.
Yeah, effectively a continuation. It's just a continuation. There should be, there's two pages, right?
Was this the first year that we did this?
I think this is.
I mean, we approved it for twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, but it was, uh, it was Chuck Shager, uh, started that in twenty twenty-four, I believe, right? Cause it was on the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh huh. It, it was in twenty-four. I don't know if it was. A different number in earlier years. We just continued it this year, um, due to the fact that it was a good number and it's a good budgetary tool.
And, and, and why is it a good budgetary tool?
Well, to account for the, the anticipated vacancies instead of actually, if you didn't do that, you're budgeting for. People that you will never hire. So that'd be a million dollars that you'd have to budget, but never get it back. You're, you're taxing the taxpayers for a million dollars. Cause we'd have to budget for that. Or if you did actually unexpectedly hire all these people in a year, where are you gonna get the million dollars? We, we would have to take it out of our savings account. And this is basically. Reducing the budget by a million dollars. And now that we've had the anticipated. Um. Lack of salaries, we can put that bunny back into, take that back out of the salary lines.
And to be clear, I'm not arguing.
No, I agree.
It's frustrating to me that I can't articulate it. So I'm still trying to under, but I mean, this has been an ongoing conversation with Councilman Kavanaugh and I for months, so it's not your fault.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just my brain. So.
I know we had.
I have additional questions. I just don't quite know what they are and I will pester Robert with them.
Okay, yeah, it's calm me down here.
Sure. And there, and there's other ways it could be dealt with. So you, you could be budgeting. An extra million dollars out of the general fund balance every year. And knowing you're not going to actually use it, but I think it's more straightforward, even though it's kind of weird initially to think about it, to, to say, this is what we don't think we're going to spend. We're pretty darn sure. Given all past history and hiring practices and in, in just the state of hiring and then just put that in there. Um. Or you do. Or you put it in, onto, into taxes and you, you have to raise tax. The tax burden to make up for that. And when you don't really need to raise taxes to do that. And that will eventually get the state, not to mention the citizens upset.
Yeah, the, I say the weakness in doing this, this way is that there may be. Pressure on department heads to not hire positions or to slow roll positions. Um, there, there could be unintended consequences from, uh, having a goal to not fill positions as opposed to having a goal to fill positions. The, the incentive, there's odd incentives that are built in.
I, I can see your point.
But I, I'm happy to not have the taxpayers pay almost an additional million dollars.
There's a, I agree that's a potential risk that should be monitored. Yeah.
I, I'm not sure how we'd be formally privy to that type of information, but yes.
Okay, are we, we all set with that one? Was this RL twenty-five dash one seventy-six? Can move on to. RL dash one, excuse me, RL twenty-five dash one eighty-one. Ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five general fund budget for overtime budget items. While you're here, Chuck. What do we, what do we got?
Yeah, this, uh, let's see. I, I think I got the, I hope I stapled these in the right order. Um. Is this the one that has all the revenue and fund balance adjustments on the bottom? With the written in amount for five thousand dollars? Am I looking at the, is it, okay, so that, so if that's the one, yes. Um, so. I, this time I went through some revenue lines and found some revenue lines that were, had some extra funds that have. Went over their budget for this year. Uh, parking meter fees and building and alteration and permits. Um. And use those lines to increase, um, these lines that were, um. That I found in the budget that were in different, various, uh, different budget lines that these departments usually don't have extra funds in. Um. Uh, like the mayor's electricity line over time in the, uh, sixteen fifty substitutes and memberships heat. That was just, that's just one budget line item. It doesn't have a budget to move anything into. Um. I'm sorry. I don't know why that says electricity. I said, I said electricity that was overtime. And then the electricity is down there for sixteen fifty.
Repeat that again, so I can update it.
Um, sorry, the, I was reading down, yeah, I was reading down the lines and the sixteen fifty, fifty-one, nine, zero, zero is overtime, not electricity. Um, the electricity line for A sixteen fifty is the five four two oh two. Uh, down further. And then, um, the bottom one is, uh, that was, that is typed out for the overtime in A fifteen-ten. That's his anticipated overtime for, um, snow and for, uh, working during the holidays for Veterans Day. I think he mentioned, um, and doing all the, uh, the downtown activities. Um, cleaning up downtown.
So there was more than anticipated building permits this year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a good thing.
Yep.
All right. Sorry, Chuck. One way, the thirty-eight hundreds OT. Not electricity or the twenty-six thousands OT not electricity?
Then disability insurance. And then the last one is parks. Um, they had their, uh. They had some extra folks work, um, later in the year for a couple of extra days.
So are there?
They had, they had a full staff.
Incentives in place for the departments that do a good job at, um. You know, like with the building and alteration permits, like, or the parking meters, like to reinvest any of that money into the departments or to. You know. Giving them anything beyond an attaboy.
That, that's, yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, at least with like the building permits, um. I don't know if there's a ton you could necessarily reinvest in, like, equipment or anything. Um, you know, the big expense in that department is personnel. Um, is part of like billing code. Um.
I just, let's say it like, yeah, these department heads probably all have wish lists of things and just seems like some percentage back, um, when, uh. You know, when, I don't, I've just.
I, I don't, I don't know if that would, uh, that would, uh, incentivize departments for increasing revenues. I don't know if that would be.
Larry would probably be delighted if he got to keep a percentage.
Uh, Larry, yes. Larry, Larry would, uh, would absolutely excel in that. Actually, I think, uh, just off the top of my head, I was looking through the revenues today and I think, um, our vital statistics office, uh, went over budget just recently, just like. Last week, um, by, by a couple hundred dollars. So.
And last year, the, the clerk's office did significantly.
He did. Yeah, about three thousand dollars.
It gives about five, you ended up moving about three of it.
Oh, that's, maybe that's what it was. Yeah.
Anything else on this? Anything else on this? There's no expedition, so thank you. And we can move on to RL twenty five dash one eighty nine. This is an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty five capital budget. Uh, capital fund budget to close unused grant and serial fund lines.
Yeah, this is something we do about this time of the year. I go through all the old grants that have been sitting open for a long period of time. And I talk with the department heads who's in charge and they say, nope, this is grants closed out. I got the closeout documents. So anything that's left over, um, we just put back into the line. So Ollie Street, um, the streetlights, that's been done. Um, Hyner Road mitigation, that's been done for several years. We were just waiting on some uh, disaster relief funds from the, from FEMA. Uh, I think we just received that earlier this year. Um, same thing with the uh, the COVID DR forty four eighty. Um, the reason why I'm doing it this year instead of last year is because it ended in twenty twenty three was Bernice was working on, excuse me, our former purchasing agent was working on her time with our FEMA rep. And um, he allowed me to continue that and to get some money for her time. Uh, and I did that and I got I got some money back just recently. I don't remember how much it was. Uh, so now I can close that one out as well.
So this is not in any way funds that we didn't use, the grants that didn't come through. This is stuff we've just been waiting on reimbursement for that we've now gotten the reimbursement, was sort of closing that.
Right, so so for example, uh, the Hyner Road uh, grant. We didn't spend it all, so I'm decreasing the um, expenses by three hundred and thirty seven thousand. I'm also decreasing the revenues by three hundred and thirty seven thousand. Because the expenses weren't as much as the grant, so we're not going to get the grant money. But we've gotten everything that we've expensed for that grant. Same thing for the other ones as well. We didn't spend four thousand dollars of the coronavirus, so I'm decreasing the revenues in those lines. Some of it came from the general fund. So I have to increase, decrease the interfund transfer revenue. And I might do this twice a year. Um, depending upon um, our grant activity um, with the uh, hopefully with our new grants administrator, uh, we can get a better handle on receiving revenues and close out grants quicker.
Anything else? All right, that was the last one for you, Chuck. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Wait a minute.
You're done.
I'll, I'll sit here for Bob.
Okay. All right. RL twenty five dash one eighty four, in ordinance to amend the twenty twenty five insurance fund budget to accept settlement proceeds for AFFF lawsuits. This is with our acting court. Acting for counsel, Robert Hury. Representative.
So there was, there's four class actions that relate to what are called film forming phones, um, the PFAs. Um, so this.
What word you just said?
PFAs or film, yeah. Ultimately, like film farming phones is the formal name that's used for the class action. But the the underlying thing that is causing harm and that we're getting reimbursed for is the PFAs that were released into the water systems. Um, so there's four class actions that the city filed claims in. Um, one involving three M, one involving DuPont, one involving Tyco and the other involving um, BASF. And there the payouts are for public water systems that were impacted. Um, so we had to submit data showing uh, with water testing information as well as information on how much water flows through our water department. And based off that, there's a calculation that's you, that's used by the settlement administrators to pay out the settlement funds for each of those. The, so the settlements that we got, we got the first payments in the three M settlement. Um, there'll be additional payments going out over the next nine years. And then we got a payment in the DuPont case. And that's what we're accepting the funds from.
What years are?
Go ahead, answer, answer.
What years are represented as far as the impacted systems?
So the the cases were filed mostly in twenty twenty three. Um, we had to submit data from twenty fourteen up through twenty twenty one. Uh, we also submitted some updated data since then. But the the primary thing is is going back from prior to to twenty twenty one.
And what are the proceed amounts?
So there's three amounts that are listed in the ordinance. So there's three increases, increases in revenue. One is for nine hundred seventy five thousand, one hundred thirty one dollars and fifty two cents. Uh, one is for four hundred twenty seven thousand, two hundred sixty six dollars and six cents. Those two payments are for the first two years of the three M settlement. And then the third one is two hundred forty five thousand, nine hundred twenty three dollars and seventeen cents. And that is for the DuPont settlement payment we received.
What's, what's the other one?
What other one?
Oh. Never mind, those are the revenue increases just going to the fund balance. That's not an insurance recovery, sorry.
Yes, correct.
So there's other outstanding class action lawsuits.
There's two other relating to PFAs. We don't have any payout information on those yet.
Okay.
For expedition, I see on there.
Why do you need this to be expedited?
What?
Why do you need to be expedited?
Why does it need to be expedited?
Okay, so. His legal line is over budget.
Yeah, so part of the funding from this is going to be moved into the legal services line to pay for our outstanding legal bills or to be outstanding legal bills.
Okay.
I guess I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all the clerks take the.
Uh, I think I'd like an update on where I with outside council costs this year by by matter, if that's possible.
I can see if we can do it by matter. I'll have to talk with Chuck and see if there's a way we can pull it by matter.
Because I mean, we, we did increase for twenty twenty five, the outside council budget and put in one some to kind of move, run through that. And obviously, there's been personnel shortages in in your office, unfortunately. So I'm sure accounts for a chunk of it, but just to uh.
Yeah, I'd say the two.
Kind of do a, a check in on that situation.
Yeah, the two big drivers are probably one, the fact that we're down someone. Um, the other one was obviously the large personnel investigation that we had to do. Involving the police chief.
Right. I mean, I'll settle for, no, I'm not going to settle for anything. I would say by matter would be nice, but.
But I.
But by firm would be.
By matter or there's some stuff that we group together.
Right.
Um, for example, like we have like two oh seven. We go outside council for help. We, we have different matters for each file that we open. But a lot of times we kind of get those all built together as just two oh seven matters.
All right, how about a summary that makes sense?
Right, I, I can do that.
We could start there. The, I appreciate that request and just to so we've got the three revenue lines. We've got the two ten going to legal services to cover what you just represented. Seventeen for vehicle repair, where does, what's that for? I understand the words, but what vehicle repair?
There is an.
Don't say, don't say it. Go ahead.
There is sort of an emergency vehicle repair line within my, the insurance fund. And given the events of this year, we're having to dip into that to assist with getting city vehicles repaired.
And that would be going to uh, police?
I don't think so.
Anybody can use it if it was a, an emergency repair and they didn't have budget in their line.
Going to that, okay, and then.
I believe we had, I know we have a park bus.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the larger picture um, to this is that um, early last year, uh, when the Water Superintendent came and and kind of gave us some of his real talk that he used to like to do, um, the previous Water Superintendent. Um, it was a discussion of, you know, what's coming down the river, literally. Uh, and uh, there is going to be or supposed to be uh, increased regulation of these plastics in uh, in drinking water supply. So that is going to entail an unknown, but probably rather large capital expenditure in treatment filtration processes, stuff I don't understand and know about. But essentially getting more of this plastic, testing our water more frequently and getting more of these plastics out of our drinking water supply before we distribute it as drinking water. Um, and there's pending EPA regulations coming in and mandates. And that is probably going to be a scary capital number. Um, and at that point, there was no as far as I know, no funding coming to back up these mandates. Um, so this insurance, uh, this not, not insurance, I'm sorry. These uh, legal settlements, settlements, thank you, I was gonna say windfall, but then even with the settlements, that's a better, um. Will hopefully provide a jumpstart for us on what will be needed capital funds to address the issue that's, that's the case is addressed. So um, I think that's, that's a good reason why we're socking away the majority of this uh, this um, settlement and probably the forthcoming settlement monies from the other suits. So.
Well, and then, I mean, there's the question of even if the EPA decides to completely roll it back, because it seemed like it was kind of in limbo and, and all that, but you know, is the city going to consider trying to do something anyway? Um, or not, but there's lots of considerations. But yeah, it's some, something that sounded like they might be backing out.
I think this is the money for a forecasted rainy day that we should be planning for.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk take the roll on the motion to expedite?
Councilmember Rathna. Hi, councillor is absent, councillor Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Councillor Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Murray is absent, council president Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Hi.
Thank you, that's five zero.
All right, last one on the agenda is RL twenty five dash one eighty seven. So it's submitted by councillor Medavetsky and ordinance to in ordinance authorizing city council to establish a social media page for public meeting announcements. This is considered in municipal and public affairs with councillor Middleton.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, President Pro Tem Hotchkiss. Uh, this is RL twenty five dash one eighty seven, just like you stated, an ordinance authorizing authorizing city council to establish a social media page for public meeting announcements.
Yeah, um, so quite a while back, uh, we had a resident uh, submitted request for legislation. This is not exactly what that resident was looking for. They were looking for it to be um, a social media page where we had mandatory posting um, which could create uh, legal, legal issues. So um, in this document, you'll see that it's very explicit that um, are still our formal open meetings law and noticing is would be the website, um, and newspaper for certain types of noticing, um, whatever the, the existing law is. This would be a supplemental um, way of notifying people. Um, it's been something that we've been talking about for nearly uh, two years. Um, I've been giving updates on it in the uh, special rules committee this year. I did try to look for a uh, middle path to just at least get our town hall notices up on the city social, um, and uh, that was not um, agreed upon by our executive branch.
Um, why? Do you know why?
Um, the concern over politi- politicalization of uh, the social media, if you follow the Binghamton City, so government social media page, it's predominantly notices about uh, trash pickup being changed for holidays or uh, water fire hydrant flushing, um, those types of announcements. Um, so they've kind of created a a very narrow, very um, not related to laws or educating people about um, how to get involved and provide feedback, but really focusing on just kind of those
General.
Really general, basic um, city topics. Um, so um, when, when it was first proposed, uh, I started to, to look into it. Um, the city of Albany uh, has a common council Facebook page. I would refer to it as like a C span of Facebook pages and that's what um, I, I was um, kind of basing this proposal off of. Um, so the, the core idea is to be posting um, agendas for upcoming meetings. YouTube videos of meetings. Um, basically nearly everything that would be on there would be redundant to the website, except that it would be in social media form, therefore it would be shareable. Um, the only thing that would be different from that would be um, the um, I didn't want to allow for the ability of uh, photos of council at government sponsored events. So for example, um, parade day, if all of council is walking in a parade. Um, so it would, it would not be individual council members delivering um, citations in their district or um, kind of, it would not be an individual focused uh, on any of the photos, but just the kind of, hey, there's a bulk of council at a there's a bulk of council at a city-sponsored event, we're in the community, types of um, photos, so again, kind of supporting the events that the city government is already supporting. Um. The plus side from to in my way of thinking about this is that currently there's a couple of things. One, um. Most recently, right, we've been having a series of different town halls since we've been in office. I think we've been really proactive about trying to get um, constituent uh, feedback and and get input on legislation. Um, but there's been some concern about, well, we, you know, my group of people or didn't hear about it, right? And you're just hearing from people who already you hear from, right? Or that are already following, because the one of the key ways people promote is through their their individual elected page or politician page or whatever. You all name your pages. Um, and therefore, the people that see that message are generally people that either really support you or really want to troll you, um, but not kind of people who are mostly apolitical, but might be interested in a topic, right? Um. So there's concern that if our recruitment process, uh, you know, I, you know, obviously, uh, for our uh, majority leader does press releases and stuff, and uh, sometimes the news picks up on it, and maybe people will learn about our town halls through that. Um, but oftentimes, people find out about it through our social pages. Um, and people don't necessarily want to follow an elected official or politician page. Um, but they may be interested in following a more of a C-span, right, type of thing which does not present to their friends and families as being in support or against or anything like that. Um, so I think it can help make sure that we are getting um, a wider audience um, for those posts over time. Obviously, it'll take time to grow um, a following. Um, but that way, you know, we really are hearing from from people that we might not otherwise hear from. So I think that's uh, one reason that I think this page um, can be important. The other is that um currently, it's kind of when there's for example, like the agenda for a meeting, right? Like I can post on my page um, a link to the city website. Um. But it's it's in terms of people using social, they're probably not going to click the link, they're probably not going to look at it. Um. But I want to make sure, but if I if I were to do my own image on my own page uh, and post it up, um. It's not technically like, I've tried to make mine like a government page and try and following as best I can, the guidelines for that, but um. There is no like rules or like, there is no official governance of anyone's individual Facebook page. And so it gets into this weird situation of like, where is this information coming from? And it's like, not exactly a government page. So my thought on usage is that we would at least have a place where we have like agendas uh, and meeting time information and all of that, that we can then reshare to our pages. And then you put your own thoughts and feelings. Uncensored, un- unvetted, whatever, you know, whatever you want to put. Um. But that there's kind of, as I get again, kind of keep going back to that kind of C-span of social media. Um. And um, that's, that's what this is about. Um, I had hoped to be able to again, since other cities do this, this is not um, a weird thing to be asking for. Um. I think it helps with transparency. I hope, I think it helps with community engagement. Um, I hope, I think it helps with um, the information that's being shared, being clear that it's government information. Um. And um. I am deeply frustrated that that this seems to be requiring legislation.
So I I I just had a question. So if we move this through this way, will it be allowed or or is still the executive branch still saying no?
Um, we'll see what happens next. Um, but if we, you know, if we pass this, um, then um, I mean, I feel bad to put, for example, like our IT department in the middle of things, but like it would be the law.
Yeah.
And um, so I would hope that people would follow the the law.
Absolutely.
So, but yeah, it it's a, it's puts people in an uncomfortable and tricky situation.
Absolutely.
Um, I don't again, I I I don't feel what what I'm asking for is um, too much, and um.
Yeah, I mean, I talked about this the last time and I I looked at uh, the Albany Council page, it's like the driest thing in the world and seems pretty
Very dry.
But informative, um, and it's just like a posting of an agenda.
And they have, they have, like, all the meetings are posted, not not just the council ones, but some of the boards in in their case, boards and commissions that uh, advise um, council. So it could be um, notes about CDAC having needed, you know, the uh, ag- agendas for CDAC meetings or Human Rights Commission or Environmental, there's a few um uh, boards and commissions that explicitly um, kind of advise council. Um. Again, you know, we don't want to generate a lot of work on um, the city clerk, right? Um, but um, it would basically dovetail with the, you know, the postings of the agendas that they already have to send to IT. And um, the the they know in the YouTube, well, YouTube videos are are up. Um, so uh, again, I this would not have lots of flowery language or anything like that. Um, I was uh. I I would envision either going completely dry with just like um you know, black and white kind of uh, agendas as JPEGs that are shareable. Um, or um, potentially following some sort of colored branding guide that just goes with like the city branding, but uh, something that's that's neutral. That's, anyway, that's my pitch.
So I just had a few things. So I note that on here, do you think you need to make any tweaks to this or no?
I am open to feedback. Um, I basically um uh, the clerk's office has been aware of my pushing for this for quite some time. Um, and uh, after one of our meetings wandered over and um, asked Sam to try and uh, and Sam, our deputy clerk um, to to pull something together, and she did a lot nicer job than I would have I had been. Um, so uh, yes, I'm absolutely open to uh, to tweaking stuff. There's, I see um, uh, quick like obvious changes, like it's a city, city name instead of Binghamton. Um. There's a couple of small things, but yeah, I'm absolutely open. This is not, we've been working on it for two years, so.
Cause I was thinking with the new year, like we, I I think it would be great to have that starting the new year. So if um, you're, you know, you're okay with it, maybe we could expedite it, get it done.
So I had, I had, I'm I'm gonna, oh, I I love that idea, but um Tuesday, I did want want to run it by our corp counsel, but he uh, was had a not available uh, at the time.
Fine.
Um, and uh, so I want to make sure that we have a conversation with our corporation counsel. I I think, again, bang up job of a of a draft, and I'm really grateful for that. Um, but I do want to run it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just gonna say, like, we should, like, if 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 that's the goal with the new year coming, I think if we could get everything sorted out in the in the beginning of the year, we could have that starting the new year as something we can introduce as like, hey, this is something that we want everyone to start being involved. You know, new year, you know, all that good stuff, you know, kind of excited, so that way people will follow, so it's not just put out in the middle of the year and people are like, what the heck is this? So like, if we can do that in the beginning of if we can do that in the beginning of the year or get this done by then, that would be great.
Yeah, I I like the idea.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I don't know how anybody else feels. I just think that if we're gonna introduce this, it'd be great to start it right in January if we can get all the kinks out.
I I love that.
Okay.
So I guess I'll turn to our corporation counsel. Do you think that we can get something modified and ready for a vote for Wednesday or um, do?
I I think we have another, we have still another meeting this month.
Yeah, we do.
I think we just keep it on the regular schedule.
Regular, okay.
Shoot for two weeks.
I can certainly have this done by the time the next regular meeting rolls around.
Okay, perfect, perfect. All right, we have agreement.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, and we can just, yeah, it that way it's like kind of set out for if this is something that we really want to do for our constituents and for the people of Binghamton, started at the beginning of the year. I'm trying to lose weight, you know, you're like, oh, I got all these new goals and then get this.
So on on uh, on on one hand of things, I'm I'm a little sad and a little annoyed that it it seems to be at the point where this needs legislation. On the other hand, it's not a terrible idea to have a social media policy for council in place that is that puts up some guardrails and makes this uh, very much a civic uh, civic uh, thing and civic service, um, and and limiting it to that. I think that that's uh, actually probably a a very good thing. Um. I uh, I had a before our our last uh, town hall and proactive code, uh, a week and a half before, so I had a constituent that was talking about proactive code. We had a great conversation about active code. I think I assumed they knew that the town hall was coming up. I forgot to mention it to them. It didn't, it just didn't come up. And so the day after the town hall, I get a very irate, angry message from this constituent, and rightfully so, because they didn't know about the town hall and would have absolutely come. And it was it slipped my mind, it just didn't, however the conversation went, it didn't click to mention it. And we have, in the way the state of the media is now, it's not you know, you don't have practically every adult in Binghamton looking at the newspaper anymore. So it's not a matter of just putting a little notice in the newspaper. It's it's not having it on one of the, one of the you know, mentioned on on the radio or on one of the news networks. It's it's, it's, you know, penetration of Facebook alone is is over seventy percent of American adults, probably higher in in our community. It's how people look for things and try and find things, and it's it should be perfectly acceptable if that's a way that we use routinely to simply put word of things happening out there, put the the government, the, you know, government business there to be commented on. Um. It's just, it's how it needs to be.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, I absolutely agree. It does make me sad, though, that, you know, the if it's if it's something basic, I don't foresee it being an issue, but it's good, because I think people, more people want to get involved, they just don't know how. I think seeing that, again, just to kind of reiterate what uh Councilmember Kavanaugh said, just kind of people see that.
Councilman Kavanaugh has been nudging me for for legislation as I tried and tried and tried to work through without uh legislation. I don't know if you want to share about the cell phones, but I that was a a key push for me.
Okay, all right.
Um, so uh, I think that's about it, and I'm obviously welcome feedback on it. Um, and we'll try to rapidly take feedback on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm motion to adjourn.